Welcome to Meet the Candidates for the Old Lime Board of Selectmen, which is being hosted by the Lime Old Lime Chamber of Commerce. I'm Alwyn Logan, President of the Chamber of Commerce and publisher of Limeline.com, and I'm delighted to be here to introduce the candidates and moderate the event. I am really pleased to be joined by Paul Choinier, who is the Editorial Page Editor for The Day, who is going to pose the questions for us tonight. We received the largest number of questions that certainly in my experience I can ever recall. So, the first point is please don't be upset if your question is not included. Paul and I are in fact the only people who have seen the questions, and Paul is making the ultimate, the final decision on which questions are asked. The candidates' biographies are printed in your program, so I'm going to leave you to either read them, or I'm sure you may already have read them. The rules of engagement, as I like to call them, are as follows. And the first one's important: there must be no signs here in the meeting room. No waving of signs, or posters, or anything of that ilk. The candidates have very kindly complied with our rule that they wear no stickers, no pins, or any sort of paraphernalia that supports their causes. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to make opening remarks, and the predetermined order for that is in your program. A coin toss has determined the sequence in which candidates will answer the first questions. And that order is we start with Bonnie Ream-Snyder, then it goes to Jude Reed, then Mary Jo Nozel, and then Chris Kerr. They're not sitting in that order, but that's the order that I will keep them to. All candidates will answer the same question in that sequence. Each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer each question. Following the four answers, each candidate can make a rebuttal statement of up to 30 seconds. At the end of the question period, each candidate will have 60 seconds to make closing remarks, and again, there's been a predetermined order that's in your program. Our timekeepers tonight are Pam Stevens and Louisa Grogan. We thank them sincerely for giving up their time for this valuable service. I'm not sure I did do this, but I do believe the candidates know that I will be strictly following the time restrictions, so that each candidate is given an equal opportunity. I will never intend to be rude to any candidate, but I will call a halt if they overrun, even in mid-sentence if necessary. And it's the way to keep things moving and to be fair, and I know that all four will comply happily with that. We'd like to thank The Day for being here. Tim Cook is here from The Day, who's going to video the whole event, and they will be posting that on theday.com, certainly by tomorrow morning, I believe. And then, all other press releases, and certainly on the Chamber website, we will provide the link to that program. I'm now going to call on Skip Sibley, who is a selectman, and moreover, has been a selectman for 16 years, and is retiring at the end of this year. I'm going to ask Skip to do the pledge of allegiance for us at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Skip. And now, we're ready to go. It's time for opening statements. And we do start with Bonnie Ream-Snyder with this as well. Timekeepers, are you ready? Bonnie, it's all yours.
Thank you to the Chamber and The Day for hosting this debate. For the last 14 years, I have served on the Board of Selectmen, the last six as First Selectmen. My record shows that a lot has been accomplished: repair to the Rogers Lake Dam, treatment of weeds in Rogers Lake, completion of the Academy Lane Fire Dock after 30 years of planning, and improvements in Soundview. Grant money, including $600,000 for landfill closure, was used when possible. We have set up infrastructure improvement funds to plan for major expenses on our roads and buildings. A new facilities manager assures that our buildings are properly maintained. The office of the selectmen has been transformed to provide great customer service in an efficient and business-like setting. And we have established numerous committees to address new ideas for better services and efficiencies. I've also served on regional and state boards, as Chair of the Lower Connecticut River Estuary Council of Governments, and as Finance Chair of the Connecticut Port Authority, which is making great progress towards bringing business to our ports. This has provided the opportunity to discuss the bypass plan directly with DOT Commissioner Reddiker, who along with Senator Blumenthal and Congressman Courtney advocated to have the Record of Decision written without the bypass. Those relationships are crucial to a small town that can go unnoticed in our state. Defeating the bypass plan was crucial for our small community. The Ream-Snyder-Nozel team has proven that we can get things done. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jude Reed.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I'm Judith Reed, and I'm running for First Selectmen. I moved to Old Lime in 1983 when I married my husband, Sloan Danaher. Sloan was born and raised in Old Lime. His family has lived here for three generations, and our children, Megan and Will, are the fourth generation of that family to grow up here. Both of our children attended the excellent Old Lime school system. For over 30 years, I have owned and managed small businesses. I have a long history of community service. I have served on the Board of Finance, Board of Ed, McCurdy Salisbury Educational Foundation, and the Old Lime Historical Society. I volunteered in our schools, and I have even served as a Girl Scout leader. I have been active and involved in the Old Lime Town for over 34 years. Hi, Mo. Old Lime needs a new, effective, and experienced leadership team. Chris and I are that team. We bring a common sense approach to problem-solving, and we know how to communicate and work effectively with our community. Chris and I have deep roots in Old Lime. We are committed to working to develop a plan that successfully leads Old Lime forward, a plan which includes investing in projects and programs to benefit all. We will work with our business communities to develop a master plan which reduces blight and increases our tax base. I will not make any major decisions without getting input from you. We will use our town meetings to listen to you and to gather information from you. I will not outsource a police department, and instead, I will maintain a respectful and productive working relationship with our police officers. Thank you for your support.
Mary Jo.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you to Paul, thank you to Owen and the Chamber, and I want to say thank you to all of you who took the time to send in questions today. Really appreciate that. I'm running for my fourth two-year term on the Board of Selectmen, and I'm pleased to be running with First Selectwoman Bonnie Ream-Snyder. What compelled me to run six years ago is still important to me, namely building trust, improving town business practices, and fiscal responsibility while listening to residents. I feel like I'm just hitting my stride, and I would like another term. Several projects have been completed, or nearly completed, that will live on after us and be economic drivers for the community. We are confronting wastewater needs at the shore, and facing vexing problems like our blight, and we had a little challenge with the Federal Railroad Administration thrown in there. It has been my honor to serve this community and the people I care deeply about, and I hope to earn your continued support for experienced leadership. As always, my focus will be on you, and listening, and advocating for you and this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?
Hello and thank you. My name is Chris Kerr. I've been an Old Lime resident all my life. In fact, I'm the fourth generation here. Many folks around town know me, my family, and especially my mother, the tax collector. So for all my life, outside of college and a few years living in Boston, I've been involved with the town of Old Lime, going to school here, working in town, and serving the community. I've been serving the town Finance Board and Planning Commission for over 15 years, and I've been in the fire department since I was 15. In addition, I run two small businesses in and around town. I'm committed to Old Lime's future, and I want to help to develop and drive Old Lime's future plan. This includes investing in programs and projects that will benefit the town long-term and short-term, while still managing our town services, i.e. the police. Both Jude and I are committed to common sense plans and results that will keep our mill rate and spending in check, while moving forward and doing the right things for the town and the townspeople. I thank you all for my support.
Thank you. Paul, it's over to you, and the first question goes to Bonnie.
Bonnie, we received several questions concerning the level of policing at Soundview and in the beach areas generally, and many of the questions concerned that it was not adequate over the past summer season. So I'd like to hear what you think about the adequacy of the police protection in the beach areas, and if you're not satisfied, what might you do if elected to another term?
Well, it's clear, we have certainly had our challenges with the police in town, because during the summertime, we have a lot of problems in the beach area. We have a lot of activity down there, and we have had challenges because we just hired two new police officers, and we had one out on short-term disability. Not to mention the fact that the schedule that we maintain makes days that we only have one officer on a shift, and days that we might have three officers on a shift, and we can't always be assured that they're at the busiest times. So there were times that policing was not adequate, and in fact, this summer, we had a lot of overtime troopers on the weekends, and that helped to shore up our police services. With that said, I think that there are some ways that we can solve that. One way I have suggested is to discuss collaborating with East Lime. Now, when East Lime formed their own independent police department, I did reach out and ask would they consider doing a collaborative effort. Did it make sense? The Chairman of the Board of Finance came with me to have a meeting and discuss that, and we felt it was worth a discussion. So we had another meeting, and then announced to the community that we were looking into it. I think that if we're afraid to look into new ideas as communities, then we are not being responsible as leaders.
Thank you. Jude?
And the question was concerning adequate policing for the town of Old Lime?
Yes, the several questions that people felt it was not adequate this summer season, that there were problems, and if elected, you know, what would you do to address that issue?
Well, we would provide strong leadership and a clear strategy for managing Old Lime's police department. There would be no need for regionalization with good leadership. The only guarantee that regionalization brings is a loss of control of one of the most important functions of the government of our town, and that is to provide a safe community for our residents. We will ensure adequate staffing and communication with our police to ensure a safe community. Two of the six positions were unfilled for over a year, resulting in public urination at the beaches, lewd behavior in residence, trespassing on people's lawns and porches, open use of alcohol and drugs. One resident was beaten and taken to the hospital. We will provide strong leadership to have a working relationship and setting the right strategy for an effective police department that is willing to work with the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo.
There were concerns and challenges with the longstanding police schedule and resident-state trooper model. Some of these have been obvious when we've seen the shorthandedness at Soundview this summer, but options are being discussed with public safety and service in mind first before cost. Bonnie investigated the police department's schedule and shared those results with the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. The troupe was asked for recommendations based on their experience with similar towns, and at the same time, East Lime decided to not become a resident-state trooper model anymore and own their own fire police force. So Bonnie, and as she said, and the Board of Finance Chair began conversations with East Lime to look if there was any synergies, and also to learn from their experience. The result of that is the beginning of discussions. A committee would be formed to look at any synergies that might develop, the pros and cons, in sharing a police force, but nothing's been decided. The concern is taken very seriously and in a logical, methodical fashion. Discussions will lead to a special committee to look at the merger, if at all. Further discussions with hearings for the town and information, and eventually, a town meeting. This is a responsible government's response to concerns, and this is the leadership that I hope to support in the future.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris?
I believe there's no reason to consolidate with East Lime. If proper leadership is in place and a proper strategy, we shouldn't have any issues. We went a whole year without a full staff. We were down two local police officers, and if we hire more part-time guys like we used to in the past, I think this would solve this, or adequately staff our full-time guys so we weren't two men down. I believe we should keep everything local, keep our own local police force, and we can manage this on our own. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to comment that I think it's very short-sighted to make statements that this just won't work. We don't know that it won't work. We have not put a committee together. We have not looked at all of the pros and cons, and considering the state of the state, where towns are losing more and more to the state, we have to be brave enough to have conversations with our neighbors and determine if some collaboration will work and will provide us better services and save us money. And I think that we've got to be brave enough to do that. Thank you very much.
Jude?
My feeling is the state of the state is the state is broke, and if we're going to follow their model, we're going to be broke. We need to be independent, we need to take care of ourselves, and there is no reason why our local government cannot step up and work out and work effectively and productively with our police officers. We need to work with them, not against them, and have a caring team that provides services for our community. Thank you.
Mary Jo?
Thank you. First of all, we were running ads for police and part-time police, and we weren't getting any takers. That's a fact, and that's one reason it took so long to get new police. It wasn't that nobody did anything about that. Secondly, we have a very good relationship with our police force, some of whom are here. We do have a concern with the scheduling. The current schedule that the police have had forever is no longer meeting our needs at Soundview. We are short because we can't get full-time police during the weekends.
Thank you. Chris?
I don't believe there will be any control if we went with East Lime. This would cost us more money, and I don't think it would be adequate for the town, and I think the leadership would be missing, and we don't want that.
Okay, thank you. Second question.
And the question goes to...
Goes to Jude Reed first.
Yes, I was wondering, did you support or oppose the decision to go with the Ledge Light Health District to replace the local health department? And is your opposition to this regional approach restricted to policing, or do you have a general philosophical opposition to regional approaches for your town?
I think my opposition, I know my opposition is losing control to a regionalization plan. I don't think the choice to collaborate with Ledge Light was given enough time to share with the members of our community. There were a lot of people who would have liked to have attended the meeting where the vote took place. It was short notification, and I think it was passed by three votes. And I am hearing from the members of the community, not just food service, but contractors, homeowners, builders, people who do provide hair and salon services, that they feel like a Gestapo has arrived in town, that they are not being worked with. They show up in the middle of the day when these people are trying to run their businesses and are interrupted. They don't have a feeling that the community is working with them, they feel that everything's been outsourced. So I think, I know that I'm not in favor of regionalizing our health services. I'm beginning to feel that maybe the leadership in town is a problem. We seem to be having a problem having a working relationship with our police department, our health services, when in fact, we should be working as a team with these people for the good of our community and not sending it elsewhere.
Thank you. Mary Jo?
Thank you. A very good question. Regionalization is a tool in the responsible government's tool belt. Regionalization has been around for a very long time. We have options. We are looking at better services. We're looking at providing services more efficiently while maintaining costs to the town. That's what a responsible government does, and that's what responsible leadership does by looking at options and having the discussion. There certainly were hearings. Our Board of Selectmen actually visited with Ledge Light in particular. Regionalization, as I said, is not new. We have a regional school district, we have a regional trooper system, we have a regional probate court, we have a regional emergency dispatch system. We have a seat at the table at Ledge Light, we have a seat at the table of our Regional Council of Governments, and we have contract reviews. Can we do more? Every year, we look at that. As the railroad effort reminded us, our First Selectmen has important connections in state and federal government that can be useful in sharing our concerns. But responsible leadership is what we have, responsible leadership and discussion is the key moving forward.
Thank you. Chris?
Again, regionalization is losing control. Ledge Light was less money for the town on the bottom-line budget, however, it's more money for the taxpayers than the users when you go to use them. Basically, we're farming out a business to make money. There are subcontractors, and we did not have the control, or we do not have the control like we did in the past, with a person here, full-time, working all the time. So I am not for this.
Thank you. Bonnie?
In 2016, as we advertised for a new sanitarian, I felt it was important to explore all the options that were available to us. When we introduced Ledge Light Health District, we actually looked at two different health districts. The Boards of Selectmen and Finance fully supported it. There were public information meetings, we did have a hearing on the matter, and actually, we started looking at it in about May or June, and actually, joined in November. So there was plenty of notification and the required notification on the town meeting. At the time, we also advertised for sanitarians, and we received three applications, and only one qualified. And today, when Ledge Light tries to hire a sanitarian, there are shortages. Now, make no mistake, all businesses must abide by the health code, and that is what Ledge Light does. They go out and they do the inspections that are required, and they make sure that the health code is met. And when we had one sanitarian and a part-time health director, we were not able to meet all of the needs of our town. Shortly after Ledge Light, shortly before Ledge Light took over, they found that there was an outbreak in one of our restaurants. Nobody here probably heard about it because they took care of it thoroughly, discreetly, and prevented a further outbreak. Thank you.
Thank you. Jude?
I have two issues about this. One is there's an obviously lack of communication between the town hall and the community. The town hall seems to be doing the minimum required to get a message out, when in fact, they could take a little longer. I had an instance when I asked if we could do a better job of communicating to the residents of our community and how we could do that, and I was told it wasn't the town hall's job to lead us around by the nose. I feel that it is our job, if we are working for you, to communicate what is going on in this town.
Thank you. Mary Jo?
Thank you. I would always advocate for additional communication whenever we have the opportunity. That has been this administration's hallmark, to communicate and reach out as much as possible. As far as Ledge Light in particular goes, again, we have a seat at the table. Bonnie recently went and we were advocated for a $5,000 rebate based on Ledge Light taking on an additional town. I mean, you've got to wonder why this is the premier health district in the state, and we belong part of it, to it. Thank you.
Chris?
Again, this is farming out departments that we can definitely control in-house. We don't have to give up control. Don't want to see Old Lime given away and having everybody else control our town, health department, police, or any other services.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Yes, to say that town hall does not communicate, and that we only do the minimum to notify people is just inaccurate. People here know that are subscribers to the town website, that you're always getting emails from us because we're posting all sorts of things. And if you've been in a meeting with me, you know you've been here, and I've said your assignment when you go home is to go on the website and subscribe so that you get emails when we try to communicate with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Third question, and it starts with Mary Jo.
All right, and just a pointer, our candidates make sure they speak into the mic, and not only helps people hear here, but it'll come across better on the web feed. A lot of questions about taxes, asking the candidates what can they do, or what have they done to try to control the property taxes, and particularly people living on fixed incomes who, you know, are fearful they won't be able to stay in their homes as they see taxes rise. So I'd like to hear from the candidates, beginning with Mary Jo, what they can do on that issue of controlling taxes.
Thank you for the question. We're very lucky living in Old Lime. We have reached out to our school district, we work very closely with them to try and have the best budgets possible, at the minimum tax increase is possible. And in fact, this year, our mill rate was up 0.55%. Our school budget was the lowest ever. So we're continually working with our partners to see that that happens, and it's important, and it's been important. At the same time, we have to look at our revenue sources. We recognize that we have limitations in this town, we're primarily a bedroom town, so it's important to look at ways we can promote business and business opportunities. And sometimes, you have to spend money to make money. So we're looking at different opportunities in the future, such as the Hall's Road Improvement to maintain our businesses, to keep our businesses, and hopefully, drive businesses here. The improvements we made at Soundview will also bring bicyclists and walkers and connectivity in our town, and hopefully, that will drive people to utilize our businesses to increase revenue. On the expense side, we have to continue to look for savings. We know we're not going to get anything probably from the state, so we budget conservatively. We anticipate not receiving money from the state routinely. Where we lose money, we're going to have to look for savings, again, with the school and in the town general government budgets. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris?
We have kept the mill rate low. On the Board of Finance, we work hard on this. The problem is the state. The state's cutting funds. As you guys know, it's not good out there. The state's losing jobs, they're raising everybody's funds. Old Lime's primarily a resident community. We have to encourage more businesses, maybe the Hall's Road. We only have a couple of business districts in industrial areas, so we might have to, or should, pursue that. So we might have to, or should, pursue that to lower our tax rate.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Actually, this team really has done quite a bit to try to keep taxes low. Of course, certain expenses are outside of our control, such as cost of living increases in payroll and healthcare insurance premiums. However, we are constantly trying to look for savings. In fact, we changed our insurance plan to a high deductible plan that we share the cost with our employees for that high deductible. But this past year, we increased that deductible even higher and self-funded it. That saved us $18,000 over the first year. In addition, we look for savings in our office supplies. We consolidated how we purchase supplies, so we save money each year. And each year, we are reducing what we put into the budget. Just recently, we went out for bid on electric rates and we saved a penny a kilowatt hour. Now, that may not sound like a lot, but if you get the electric bills we get, it really adds up. And we are installing LED lights on our streetlights throughout town, and we're even looking at our buildings to go with LED lights. Again, it's saving electric rates and it's also saving on our maintenance. So we look for all sorts of ways to save where we can on our budget and keep that tax rate down.
Thank you. Jude?
I think if you look at the budget, there's a couple of other places perhaps we could have saved some money. We are over budget on the Selectmen's Legal. The budget was for $45,000. The actual for last year is $71,000. The boathouse, we keep going back for money. We received a grant. We approved some funds. We're going to include bathrooms in that project. Now, we've taken 100, we've agreed to pay $150,000 to build new bathrooms for Haynes Park, which were supposed to be included in the original project. Those are a couple of aspects. Another one is, I think we could increase our tax base by fostering a shoreline business residential district and managed growth. This is not solved by installing sidewalks. We need a willingness to work with investors to create and develop mixed-use new structures for retail, restaurants, and limited housing. We will work to foster an environment that attracts private investment in Old Lime and striking the balance between development and community, thereby ensuring a steady tax base that can support and provide for our declining enrollment in the Old Lime school system. Again, with proper leadership, I do not think we will have to suffer from a gap of taxes, especially if we can make this work as a group and collaboratively. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo?
I just think in summary, this is an issue that this administration has worked very collaboratively with our Board of Finance, our Economic Development Commission, our wonderful Boards, Commissions, and Committees of volunteers who work very hard to bring projects in within budget and projects that will benefit this community in the long run and be economic drivers in the long run. We've also looked at modifications on our budget and we've had used our very nice surplus to look at two funds to protect us so we keep our budget more even and we avoid the peaks, such as planning for road construction and road repairs instead of having oops. And each year now, we put $400,000 in capital expenses to try and even off that budget and avoid any increases that come as a surprise.
Thank you. Chris?
I think saving $18,000 in health insurance is not going to really drop my taxes much or anybody else's here when you have a $34 million budget. We need to get more businesses in town. Yes, we want to keep Old Lime rural. That's great, and we will. But we have a few business districts that we can work on and help grow. We have to stop chasing grants that cost us money. And we have to keep our surplus. We can't keep on hitting it because we need our surplus to keep our bond ratings.
Thank you.
The term "chasing grants" is really misused here. Small towns depend on grants to help us do infrastructure. And we're not talking about simply sidewalks on Halls Road. We're talking about transforming Halls Road so that the businesses that are there will stay and we attract new businesses there. Those are things that I think that we have to be thinking about for our future. And those are the things I'll continue to do as First Selectman.
Thank you. Jude?
I don't think that a boathouse is infrastructure. I think it's a wonderful project that really is an asset to our community, but we have spent a lot of money over and above the grant money that we attained. Also, we need to come up with a master plan to develop how the business districts in this community can survive. Right now, you drive down 156 and it's a ghost town. There used to be viable contributing businesses that no longer exist and it looks like blight.
Thank you. We're now on to the fourth question, and we start with Chris.
Chris, if your ticket was to win and take administrative control of the town of Old Lime, what would be your three biggest priorities going into office? And how would you be set about taking care of those priorities?
I think the three largest issues right now are the police department. Potentially, the talk is going with East Lime. I understand it's just a talk, but again, I don't believe in farming out our services. We want to be our own town and our own services. The sewer issue in town is huge. We have to start working with the three chartered beach associations that are under consent and looking for a pump station and to work with our town. We have to deal with that to get them moving on. And we have to be aware of the state funding. You know, the state's broke. We can't keep on going to the state. It's not going to be there. And this is going to cause major financial problems with us by either cutting our funding or, you know, basically, lack of funding. We can't keep on going to them. Those are my three ideas.
Thank you. Bonnie?
Well, clearly, our police issues are something that we are going to address. And I believe that we can solve that, whether we stay with the resident trooper program or we look at collaboration with another community. And I believe setting up a committee will tell us which is the best direction to go in. The sewers are a very important factor, and we are working with the three beaches. In fact, this administration is the first one that has been working with the beaches on some of the issues. We are currently reviewing a lease for the pump station. We're very close to agreement on that, and I think it's the best collaboration we've had with the beaches. The state budget is a problem, but we have been budgeting for it, knowing that they have had problems. But I would also say, my biggest thing is the Halls Road Improvements Committee. I think we owe it to our citizens and from the presentations that we have had, where people have come to our meeting and we've talked about what they want to see, they are ready to have Halls Road as part of our community and make it a vibrant Main Street in order to keep our businesses here. I think we're ready for it, and I think this is the administration that can do it.
Thank you. Jude?
I agree that Halls Road needs improvement, and I think it's great there's a committee. I've been having some problems finding out exactly when those meetings are held. Sometimes, they're not held in the Town Hall. Sometimes, they're held off-site. And sometimes, I've been told it's not really a meeting, but a focus group. We only, it's a small room and maybe, you know, we're confined space. Well, a meeting's a meeting, and it should be communicated to the community when those meetings are and that everyone is welcome and that there are minutes. The other two issues that I see that are important, are most important right now that need some care, are the sewers. We can't keep holding up the private beach associations. They have their funding. They have a consent where they have to comply, and we are dragging our feet. We need to move quickly on this or they're going to go off on their own. The other thing is police. The police department is an integral part of our town. Farming it out to someone else to take care of the community is impersonal. We need it to be much more intimate. These people know our community. We know them. And to have a rotating staff, of police officers, that are not familiar with our town, our students, is going to be doing a disservice to our community. I think blight is also...
Thank you. She stopped because she was told to stop.
I was told to stop. I would have kept going, but I didn't know...
Just to explain to the audience, it wasn't that she forgot what to say.
Missed frame.
Mary Jo?
Thank you. As Judy, I think, was going to start and say, the blight ordinance is really important for our community. We're very close to having an ordinance or a draft ordinance to bring to the town for hearings, to get feedback before it goes to town meeting. It's something I've been wanting for years here. We had a start on this about five years ago, and sometimes, you have to start, you have to regroup, kind of collect different thoughts and ideas, and the result is going to be something we can be proud of. And the blight ordinance that we're looking at is based on other communities' blight ordinance. It's not something we're inventing, so it should be something that meets our needs but also stands up in court. Also, I want to finish the projects we started. Most of them are almost there, but it's very important to me to have them finished and have those ribbon cuttings and invite people down to enjoy our new facilities and new assets that will bring business to town. And I really want to work continually on getting new people, younger people in particular, engaged in government, working on our Boards and Commissions and Committees. That's how we share new ideas. That's how our dialogue advances. And we're working very hard, but I need everybody's help. And if you're out there and you have time, please join in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris?
Everybody's talking about blight. Blight can be handled...
Chris, can you speak up? I want to hear you.
Blight can be handled. Can you hear me? All right, no problem. A lot of the blight issues could be handled by the zoning officer and/or work with the town. Some of these people that, the big properties that everybody's been talking about have come to the town and have offered ideas and solutions, but the town hasn't accepted them. So again, we're just sitting there. And the Halls Road...
Okay, thanks. Bonnie?
First, I have to say that all of our meetings and the minutes are posted on the website. And I did check that after I heard the accusation that they're not able to be found. And all but one meeting of the Halls Road Improvements Committee was held here in Town Hall. We are not holding the beaches up. I have told them numerous times, keep on going without us. And I find it interesting that Judy thinks that we rushed to choose the health department, but we're dragging our feet on the sewers. I will still continue to go at the pace that is reasonable to make sure we make the right decisions about the sewers.
Thank you. Jude?
I don't think paving Hartford Avenue, or at least half of Hartford Avenue, is solving a blight problem. I think we need to work with the property owners down there and come up with a plan that eliminates blight through cooperation. We cannot expect them to demolish a building, have only 12 months to reconstruct, but not tell them or even give them an idea when the sewers are going to be finished. Are they supposed to install a septic and two years down the road, pay for a connection fee to the newly-installed sewers? It doesn't make sense and it doesn't work.
Mary Jo?
Well, I'll just address the last point Jude made is that the pavement on Halls Road, or I'm sorry, Hartford Avenue, was a safety improvement. And because we came under budget on the project, it allowed us the ability to pave the section of the project where we have improvements. So yes, it looks nice, but it was imperative because we weren't going to have enough money to remove the old parking lines and that it confuses drivers. So it's strictly a safety, as well as a beautification to the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Question number five, and it starts with Bonnie.
And if you might, the moderator, if you might mention when we are doing the 30-second rebuttal, because I think sometimes with the, for the timekeepers and all our sakes, because I think as they rotate, sometimes we can lose track as an audience when we're having the initial question, when we're having the rebuttal. Just a suggestion. We got several questions about the boathouse at Haynes Park, Bonnie. And the three complaints I heard about it was, one, that it's become too expensive. Two, given that expense, it really is only targeted at a limited constituent, primarily the rowing club. And third, should have really been a Region 18 project. So if you could address the boathouse issue, and you know, obviously, want to hear from our other candidates as well on that.
Sure. So the statement that it's only for a select few people is really an inaccurate statement, although I've heard it repeated often. Surely, no single athletic facility is always used by a broad cross-section of the public. But this one really is actively used by many people. The Fred Emerson Boathouse has been in Haynes Park for decades and upgrades were badly needed. The town did it because we got a steep grant for $478,000. And it's only the town that can implement that grant, so it had to be done by the town. Now, a lot of people try to say that it was very expensive. Building a boathouse of that size is expensive, but it is one big garage. And we did the best we could to make sure that we limited what we had at the boathouse but still provided what was needed there. Participation in the sport in our town over the past 30 years or more has resulted in Olympic champions, as well as many scholarships for our students. In fact, the First Selectman of Stonington was in town yesterday, taking a look at the boathouse because they are going to be building one. And he pointed out that their students also get a lot of scholarships. So I think it was a good investment. The Old Lime Rowing Association has programs for all ages.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jude?
I think a lot of people agree, a boathouse for a community is a worthy project. And I think I heard that it really is sort of a big garage, but a million-dollar garage? I mean, we could have done a Butler Building, fully equipped, for maybe half the price. And it does seem to be used by a select few. A select few people who are from out of town, as well as our rowing crew and Region District 18, which is fine. But why do they get to use it and I still have to get a beach sticker to go into that park? I mean, we're mixing out-of-town public use with local use. The boathouse is an example of a worthy project, but we use public funds for a non-public entity that restricts public access to the facility. I don't understand why. And I also believe that I think we were supposed to have bathrooms that were involved in this project. It was part of the plan. It was not delivered. And now, the Board of Finance and the town has approved another $150,000 to go into this project. It seems like a really high-priced garage.
Thank you, Jude. Mary Jo?
The Rogers Lake rowing facility has been a valuable asset in town for decades. And where that sits is one of the first things people see when they enter town on that side of the town. So it's important. And it also serves as an economic driver to our community. People move... People move here to be part of the excellent facilities and coaching that we have at the boathouse. People move here to go to school, so they have here for that advantage. And this wasn't just developed for a few people. The initial grant came before the previous administration. They applied for the steep grant first. Our administration was lucky enough to have it come through for us. But just like town hall renovation and school renovation, there comes a time in every facility for it to be assessed. Is the facility meeting its desired purpose? What will it take to renovate it? In this case, the boathouse, which really was a garage, is no longer meeting the needs of the programs, and it needed a redo. We had an excellent committee working on it that worked hard and diligently to be as inclusive of the various concerns in the community. And possible budget shortfall led to the formation of a community fundraising effort under Skip Sibley, to raise money for new docks and additional desired park improvements that the town will really appreciate in the future.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris?
The boathouse turned out very nice. It looks beautiful. However, it's not what we really ordered. When we initially, when it was voted for, it was a grand building. It was beautiful. However, after the slab issue and other issues with that, it got trimmed down. Basically, ordered a BMW, delivered a Volkswagen, we paid for a Mercedes, and we still don't have bathrooms. The initial thing up there, one of the big items, was Haynes Park needed bathrooms, and that was incorporated into the project, and it isn't now. And now it's budgeted for next year's budget of $150,000. So, the boathouse, again, it came out nice, to drive by, it looked beautiful, but it's not what the townspeople voted for.
Thank you, Chris. And now we will go to rebuttals of that question. Bonnie? And you don't have to rebut, I should clarify, but if you would care to, Bonnie?
Thank you very much. I do care to. Actually, we did look at a Butler Building, and it really came in at about the same price, and it would not have been as nice. By the time you get done with the site work, the slab, and all of that, the Butler Building was not going to save us any money. And I have to point out that those people that are using the boathouse that reside out of town, they are paying for parking there as well. And the steep grant requires that we open it up to the general public, and we do through the rowing association.
Thank you. Jude, do you wish to rebut?
With new leadership, we will ensure projects are pursued because a majority of the town residents express a need. We will not be guided by available grant money. We will make sure projects come in on time, on scope, and under budget. Thank you.
Mary Jo?
Just to comment on that, that whenever we are lucky enough to get grants that save the taxpayers, we go to town meeting to have that budget approved for allocation. That's the first thing. Secondly, we had a town meeting that approved the additional allocation. This was a desired project by the community, and had a lot of outreach and a lot of interest, and that was eight. The last allocation, the town meeting, was jammed. So, it was a very popular, very popular, needed asset for our community.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris, do you wish to rebut?
This is, again, a perfect example of chasing grant money. We had the steep grant, they thought, we can build this grand building.
Can you hear me?
It cost us a lot of money for this grant. And, again, we were chasing the grant money to build this building that wasn't what was originally ordered.
Thank you. Now we turn to the, what I think will be the last question, and it starts with Jude.
Really, the last question? Wow. Went fast.
Depends on where you're sitting.
Went fast here. The town and the region celebrated a big victory when the Federal Railroad Administration announced they were dropping the Old Saybrook to Kenyon spur bypass. But that's not the end of the story. The FRA essentially kicked it back to Connecticut and Rhode Island and said, okay, so, you know, what's your idea, basically, if we're not going to build the bypass? And I was wondering, if you're elected first selectwoman, what would you see as the town's role in that process going forward?
Once again, I think it's a leadership role, and after the last incident event, project, defense, I think our town role would be to step up sooner. If we had known that, if the community had known the intent of the train to run through Old Lime in November of 2015, we would have acted sooner. And instead, it wasn't communicated to our community until either the end of January or beginning of February 2016, when the issue was raised by a grassroots effort of volunteers. So, I guess I would be proactive instead of reactionary. I would work with the powers that be, state, federal, and local, to collaborate on a plan that we could be part of, and not one that was being forced on us. I think it's important to keep the lines of communication open, instead of not communicating and sharing information. And at times, I feel the leadership has lacked in that role. Again, I would take a proactive approach to it, and not a reactionary approach. We need to be forefront leaders. We need to understand and be in step with the federal and state transportation departments, just so that we are not being forced, a plan being forced onto Old Lime. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo?
Thank you for the question. I believe that this was the best example of a community coming together to do the right thing. Sometimes we forget how lucky we are in this town, and how valuable everybody is in this town, and how important it was to pull together and form a good defense against this. You had to be reactive, because we weren't aware that this was happening. And as soon as we did become aware, we did jump on it. Under the leadership of First Selectwoman Bonnie Reamsider, this administration stepped up to address Goliath head-on. Through education, good counsel, working with passionate stakeholders, a viable plan of defense developed, which went viral. Residents developed their own approaches to tackling this disastrous plan through educational outreach, petitions, and social networking. Southeast Coast was a huge help. The end result is a win for all of us. Bonnie is known and respected by state and federal officials. This was critical to our happy ending. The support of our Connecticut delegation was vital. Her experience, leadership, and work with the stakeholder team was key to punching holes in this undemocratic process. A grand example this was of responsible leadership that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris?
I think we have to thank Seacoast for all the help they did to help us with this issue. We have to start earlier on these issues. We had known four months before it was really made public, and I think communication from day one, from the start on anything, is number one.
Thank you. Bonnie?
So, clearly, the message here is that others were doing things, and I just sat on this and didn't do anything, and I take great offense to that. I went to the hearing on January 13th, which was one of the first hearings. That's when hearings began. And there was a newspaper article about that, and that's how people did find out. And then everything rolled from there. But your question is about where we go from here, Paul. I think it's very important to understand that if this plan is developed, it's probably not going to be developed for about 30 years in the future. And clearly, we won't be here. Many of us in this room won't be here, but those of you who will be here will have to worry about where that is going to go. So, how will we know? Because we weren't notified as CEOs of the town. And I have proposed that the legislator adopt a plan where, when a plan like this, that is going to so severely impact a town, the CEO of the town gets a certified letter, but also the executive director of the Council of Governments should get a certified letter as well. Because the Council of Governments deals with transportation. They are going to know what that letter means and what the impact is on a community. And that way, whoever our successors are, will know that something important is happening, and they can jump on it right away.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jude, do you wish to rebut?
I don't doubt that Bonnie had worked so hard on defeating the train, but I think credit should be given also, and where it's due, to Seacoast. It was a tireless team of volunteers that worked 16 months. They raised their own $13,000 to continually get the message out to the communities. They led the brigade that charged for the meeting, where 500 people showed up. And from what I understand, they weren't even invited to the celebration between the town hall and Blumenthal, and I think that was a real affront to the people who stepped up and also volunteered.
Mary Jo?
Well, I'm sorry to hear that there are ill feelings about this whole process, but I don't want to point fingers at anybody, because we are damn lucky that this thing turned out the way it did, and I am celebrating. We all worked together, and we all should be thankful that we all worked together in a bipartisan effort. And the thanks go to all of us. But I have to say, without the connections Bonnie has with the state delegation, with our federal Connecticut delegation, we may not have had this happy ending. So, I'm grateful.
Thank you. Chris, do you wish to rebut?
I think open communication is key with any issue in town, and we have to get an early start on this, and we have to be aware of it in the future, because it could happen again.
Bonnie, would you care to rebut?
First of all, it wasn't known four months before that hearing on January 13th. And I think that people are trying to rewrite history. If you look at the latest Old Lime events, there is a letter from the first selectwoman, and I thanked a whole lot of people, including Seacoast, Senator Blumenthal, and all of you out there who wrote those letters. If those letters and that communication had not been sent in when they were, my discussions with Commissioner Reddiker would have been meaningless. That's what really gave it the foundation to make happen that the record of decision did not have the bypass in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to squeeze another question in? What do people...
If we have time, sure. Before, and then closings.
Okay. One more question.
Who's next up on the...
This will go to Mary Jo.
I think certainly a big topic of discussion, and I'll make it general, because I can't get to the individual questions, but certainly a big area of concern is the situation of ground pollution and the need for sewers in some sections of our beach communities here in Old Lime. So, if our candidates can talk about if they're satisfied where that process is, and if elected, what would their priorities be going forward with this critical issue for the town?
I think I'll just address where we've been and where we're going. We're under order to resolve the pollution concerns at the shoreline. Because of this administration's leadership, we educated ourselves, we brought in, I think, a wonderful engineering firm that led us through the start of the process. We have a wonderful WPCA that has stayed with the project for three years. And we're at the point now where they're assessing not only the costs, but the equivalent dwelling units, the nitty-gritty. But nowhere in this process, when we were first elected, did we have any idea that we were facing this. So, in the six years, I think we've come a long way. I think that there is pollution in the shoreline because of the density, and I think that's been sort of standard and understood. But we've been methodical and scientific on our efforts. Bonnie and the WPCA have worked closely to give more testing time for Hawks Nest, which is important. But ultimately, we have to do what's right for our environment, right for the owners of the properties who live there and drink the water, and for those of us who swim in Long Island Sound. I think they're doing it very methodically, and it may not have been our first choice in plan, but it's what we have, and we're trying to work productively to solve the problem.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris?
Judy and I will work as a team to work with the beach communities to move this along, so, for one, it doesn't impact the other towns, other parts of the towns, excuse me, associated. We will quickly try to finalize this pump lease, so that the other three chartered beaches can move on, and we can sewer Hartford Avenue and decide beaches there, not the side beaches, side roads, excuse me, Swan and Portland. But, again, we have to work with these communities to help each other out, so we'll solve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie?
I would say that our WPCA has been doing a very good job at looking at this issue. And I'd like to remind everybody that they are all volunteers on the WPCA, and a lot of work has gone into it. We have been working very well with the beaches all along, and we are really on the brink of an agreement for a lease for the pump house. By the way, that does have to go to a town meeting for approval, and we do have to have a public hearing on it. So, it's not something we can rush through just so the beaches can hook up. We have to give it thoughtful consideration. But I've also worked with the WPCA, the chair of the WPCA, and I went up to talk to the Connecticut DEP about the administrative order and what that means. And we were able to negotiate that sewers would be put into, or the plan would say that sewers are needed in Soundview, the three roads in Soundview, but that Hawks Nest could have time to figure out where the groundwater flow is, and whether there's actually pollution in there. And I think that that was the right thing to do, because there is still a question mark in my mind about Hawks Nest. And there are certainly question marks from people that would be impacted by this. So, I think we still have a lot of work to do, but I think we're doing a good job with the WPCA that we have.
Thank you, Bonnie. Jude?
I think if you ask the three private beach associations right now if they think that we're doing a good job helping them get sewers, I think we'd hear an overwhelming, no, we are not. They feel that it's taken too long, and when it keeps taking longer, it's costing them more money. So, Chris and I and our team, we will work to quickly finalize a pump station lease agreement with the beach communities and to allow sewer engineering to commence. We will ensure that costs associated with Soundview and the shoreline beaches are funded via the users, not the rest of the communities. And we will reintroduce sewer avoidance for the rest of the communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jo, do you wish to rebut?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I don't believe the town has been delaying. I think they've been brought up to speed quite quickly. In fact, when we were first elected, the private beach association had already finished their sewer plan. So, we have gone from zero to wherever we are pretty darn quick. I don't believe we're delaying. I believe we're trying to work with the private beach associations, again, in a methodical way. And in fact, the pump house, which is coming along, are also going to, the lease is going to allow us to build badly-needed bathrooms.
Thank you, Mary Jo. Chris, do you wish to rebut?
We have to work with the three beaches. We have to work with their lease, their agreement with the lease, and we also have to educate the rest of the town, how we are still a sewer avoidance community for the balance of the inland sections of the town. But mainly, we have to work with the three chartered beaches to go forward, so they can get the sewers.
Thank you, Chris. Bonnie, do you wish... Bonnie, do you wish to rebut?
I'm glad that we all agree that we have to work with the three beaches because that's exactly what I have done. In fact, recently, I've had about three meetings with their WPCA representatives to review that lease, along with their attorney and our attorney, to make sure that the language in the lease reflected everything that we were trying to do and that this town was protected. And that is most important to me when we're talking about leasing anything to anyone. We have to make sure that we're on the right side of that.
Thank you, Jude. Bonnie, I'm sorry. Jude?
When I left the Board of Finance six years ago, there was always a question every year in the budget, when are we going to get bathrooms down at Soundview? And I am agreement on this. I think finally, we will get bathrooms at Soundview. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that's the end of our questions. At this point, each candidate will have sixty seconds, one minute, to make closing remarks. And there is a predetermined order, which is also in your program. So we're beginning closing remarks and we start with Republican Jude Reed.
When I was considering running for First Selectman, the thought that kept coming through my head was, we can do better. We are all human, we all make mistakes. And while my opponent has the advantage of incumbency, I have the advantage of knowing that we can do better. How can we do better? We can do better with new leadership. I believe, and those who support Chris and me believe, that unfortunately, mistakes have been made and opportunities have been lost. It can be argued that some of the recurring themes of this administration have been project cost overrun solved by drawing down the town surplus, management and oversight missteps, notably with the town police had eroded cooperation, endangered our citizens and cost of town unneeded, unbudgeted dollars for grievance reconciliation, unnecessarily relinquishing local control to the state or a regional entity such as Ledge Light, poor communication and less than reasonable meeting notices, front-running on the train issue, squandering economic development opportunities with inaction or vision.
Jude, I have to stop you here. Thank you. And now it's Bonnie Ream Snyder, the incumbent Democrat First Selectwoman.
Thank you. It truly has been an honor to serve as First Selectman of this wonderful town. Over the past six years, both Mary Jo and I have worked on many projects, sometimes filling our plates to overflowing, but knowing that each project is important to many people. Mary Jo is a great advocate for the citizens as she always listens and brings your concerns to the attention of Town Hall. And she's worked hard to keep our boards and commissions filled with thoughtful and hard-working members, which is a challenge for all communities. We're excited about the projects that we still want to complete, including the Blight Ordinance, the Halls Road Improvements Project, and the new ADA Playground at Cross Lane. And there's a lot more to be done to assure that the future for Old Lime is bright and secure. I believe that through our dedication and service to the public, we have made the case that we are the best team to lead Old Lime into the future. Please join the many voters who support us by voting for Row A on November seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. And now Republican Chris Kerr.
Local solutions and local control are preferable to handling our issues. We need to support, not impede, the beach communities to comply with consent orders. We need to treat Town Hall staff as professionals who are all part of a team serving Old Lime taxpayers. We need to treat our town's surplus fund as last resort, not as a slush fund. And we want to map out a plan towards restoring and elevating Old Lime as a vibrant, attractive, charming community on the waterfront. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you. And now finally, incumbent Democrat Selectwoman, Mary Jo Nozel.
Thank you. We live in a special place. Bonnie and I remain committed to Old Lime, our prized school system, the values our community supports, and making our hometown the best it can be. Tonight, you have seen why the qualified leadership team of Ream Snyder and Nozel are needed in Old Lime. It was very clear to me. The successful battle for our town against the FRA was won by the guidance of Bonnie Ream Snyder and the influential bipartisan collaboration she orchestrated from the CEOs and elected officials of shoreline towns to our state and federal delegation. This while working on numerous projects, often funded partially by desirable grants. This is a government that works for us. I am asking for your vote for the experienced leadership team of Bonnie and I on November seventh, and actually, I'm just urging everybody to get out and vote also. Thank you for your questions and for joining us tonight and thank you to my fellow debaters. Good night.
Thank you. And now, I'll just wrap this up very quickly. I'd like to thank you all, the candidates. You've been in the hot seats tonight. Thank you for participating and for being so gracious with respecting the rules of the debate. I'd like to thank Paul for being our, as always, I don't know what adjective to use, wonderful question master. I'd like to thank our timekeepers. I'd like to thank the town of Old Lime for hosting us and the Chamber for sponsoring the event. But most of all, I'd like to thank all of you, and we are crowded here, for coming out tonight to hear what's happening. Local politics is alive and well. I would just like to give a very, very quick plug for the Chamber. We are in the midst of a membership drive. We have a lot of exciting new things happening. Please join us. We'd love to see you. Don't forget to vote. I'll add to Mary Jo's comment, on Tuesday, November the seventh, six AM to eight PM at Cross Lane, Cross Lane Firehouse. And finally, we do have some light refreshments and people are going to mingle, both out in the foyer and in here if you wish. Thank you again for coming. Thank you to the candidates. Thank you to Paul. Thank you to the timekeepers and good night.